Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Waukegan City Council Meeting for May 18th, 2015. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
He's here.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you again for another city council meeting. We never get tired to come to this council and ask God to bless our city. Bless the mayor, bless the council, bless all of our citizens. Make us one, if you say it in your word. Bless them, we ask in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Amen.
For the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every single justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to move that we seat Alderman Cunningham second. Motion to seat Alderman Cunningham by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As many of you know, last Friday, we had a demonstration. At that demonstration, there were all of 35 people. Someone from Lake County took it upon themselves to shut down the whole county building for the whole day for fear that something may occur. I was notified, myself and Corporation Council in Chicago, at a conference. They called me at noon. I was back home by 2:15. City Hall remained open. I saw absolutely no reason to shut down City Hall for protesters. How county, why they did, I don't know, but I can tell you, it's going to cost the taxpayers substantial dollars because once the unions find out that they sent those people home early, five hours early, they're going to want that compensation for themselves as well. So, that might be an interesting time. I'm very proud of Chief Wallace, Commander Kokorian, Deputy Chief Stevenson, and Deputy Chief Zupac. They handled the situation very well. They addressed the protesters with respect and dignity. There were no incidences. The protesters were very peaceful, very calm, considerate. Some got a little bit out of hand, but we reined them in. But all in all, you know, that's why we live in America. We have an opportunity to protest things that we don't agree with. So, again, Wayne, thank your people for that. I really appreciate that.
You're up.
Yes.
It's a little out of whack, but I wanted to say, I commend you for that and, of course, our police department. But I certainly would hope that the county would have at least had some sheriffs on backup if they didn't call anybody in. And we have to take the brunt of the overtime costs to call people in when we didn't even have, I guess you'd say, a dog in this fight. I'm a little upset with the county. If we got a, it's our city, accountability happens to be here, we'll take care of it. Suppose there was 2,000 or 3,000 people that showed up, we would have had to deal with it. The city of Waukegan, because it's in our town, and they, if they did not communicate any strategy to our chief that they were going to have deputies on call, that's a total lack of respect, in my mind, by the county, not to help us out in this situation.
The whole incident was handled by our police department. They provided no boots on the ground downtown. It was all Waukegan officers. We held the day shift over and we called the second shift in early. But there again, we were there until about seven, almost seven o'clock, Wayne. I was there, Wayne was there. I even got the direct traffic. Wayne, I do a good job. There you go.
That just befuddles me, that the county would just say, "We're just going to shut our doors and go home. You guys deal with it." We didn't even have a dog in the fight, just happened to come down our street, which is fine, people have the right to protest, I'm all for that. But my God, how about a little communication? Hey, you know, can you guys help us out with this? You know, this and that. I just can't believe that. It just befuddles me beyond belief. Good old Waukegan, fit in the bill. Taxpayers of Waukegan will pay the overtime costs.
Your Honor, and I know this is your time.
Alderman Cunningham.
I know this is your time, but if I'm not mistaken, as many of you know, I do some part-time work over at the sheriff's office. If I'm not mistaken, and maybe the chief can help me out, that morning, I saw our very own Commander Kokorian, I think, in a briefing. Obviously, I wasn't a part of that meeting, but I'm certain, almost certain, that they were speaking of different strategies that was going on. And maybe we can get a better report before we blast the no cooperation from the county. I think we have a great working relationship with them, we're building some. I know you've done some things in over the past, so I want to make sure that what Alderman Moiseo is saying is, hopefully, that is not true. But I know I witnessed myself, the commander, and if I know Commander Kokorian the way that I do, he's a top-notch guy. And I'm almost certain that they were thinking on that and others, so I don't know. I can't, I know I saw him there that morning, and maybe the chief can enlighten you and brief us, the councilmen, on that. So, thank you.
Wayne, come on up here. Was there anyone from county on the ground here?
Chief, I hate to do it to you.
What's that? We're okay. No, 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 no. No, that's fine. No, we went over in the morning at about 9:30. I was in there also. Deputy Chief Zupac and myself, and they had notified us of a strategy and some contingencies they had. They talked to us about what we were planning on doing, and we went in and executed. We had the, basically, we ended up with the area around. Their concern was the building, the courthouse, and obviously, the jail. The jail's quite a responsibility to secure at a time like that. If you have any type of civil unrest in the area, the jail can become, it can become a hotbed of activity, so that was a lot of their responsibility. At the time, when the demonstrators set up in that, it was Waukegan officers out there. And as the mayor indicated, we held over the day shift for a little while, and then we had some officers that were around. We were lucky enough, they were having, some of the officers were gathered at the station, so we had some of them called in. As well, we also initiated, or we had, I should say, contingency plans and some assistance from the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, ILEAS, as well as assistance offered from the state police. Requested, this was just for traffic, but nobody came up because nobody was needed. The crowd made their way over to the county building and dispersed shortly after, so.
Thank you.
Hey, are there any questions? I'm sorry. No? Okay. Thank you.
Another good thing that happened to us last week. The PBLC contract that's been a bone of contention for the past three years was ratified by the PBLC Patrolman's Union last Friday. Ninety-seven percent of the officers agreed with the contract. I sent the Alderman, the specifications of the contract, and my feeling on the contract. I hope to ratify that contract next city council meeting. If any of you have any concerns or questions about what I said, email to you. Please call me. It's good to get that done. This year was the first year that I can, that I know of, and I was a union president for many, many years. We negotiated all six union contracts without the assistance of a labor attorney. We had one labor attorney. PBLC? Yeah. So...
But did you have Steve Martin?
We had Steve Martin.
Well, that's all we had.
We had Tina, myself, Wayne Wallace, Rico Farrell. We negotiated all six union contracts. As many of you know, labor attorneys are about $400 an hour. We didn't pay any of it. So, that was a good thing for us. Okay. That's it for that. Next is motion to approve the regular minutes of May 4th, 2015. Motion by Ald, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman's time. Jamie, I'm sorry. Jamie, I was in a hurry.
Good evening, everyone. Just two things I wanted to talk about. First of all, thank you to the mayor for gracing us, Waukegan Main Street's annual lunch with the mayor. We had a sold-out house. I don't know what we're going to do next year, but we'll figure it out. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all the city, all the Aldermen and the city employees who were able to attend as well. One of the things that we do hand out at our annual meeting is our annual report. And I give in each one of you, this is a summary of what happened, just a little bit of what we did in 2014. If you take a look at the cover, these are just a few of the activities that happened in our downtown and lakefront district last year. So, I would love to talk to all those people who say there's nothing to do in downtown Waukegan because, as I say in my letter, there aren't enough hours in the day for everything that I want to do in downtown Waukegan. The other thing I want to point out that's in the annual report is the volunteer hours. Our volunteer hours in 2014, at the rate that they assign for Illinois, for the state of Illinois, equaled more than $173,000 if we had had to pay those people. So, that's the equivalent of three full-time employees. So, the bang for your buck here, four, out four full-time employees plus a half-time admin in 2014. Because I know some of you, obviously, want to know a return on investment, so that's just a slight, one little part of your return. The second thing I want to mention is Scoop the Lake is our big, next big event coming up, and that is sponsored by Waukegan Yacht Club and Anchorage Yacht Club. And the beneficiary is Waukegan Main Street, so of course, I encourage you all to participate. So, how do you participate? It's an amazing event. It connects our lakefront to our residents and all in Lake County. It's a two-day event. Friday night at the yacht club is registration for the event on Saturday, as well as entertainment, food, cocktails, if that's your thing. The actual event is Saturday. There's two parts to it. A regatta, sailboat regatta. You can sign up to sail on a boat, or you can sign up to just be a passenger on a sailboat. So, if that's something you've never done, here's your opportunity. The second part of that is a dinghy poker run, and we use dinghy very loosely. It can be anything that floats. And you go around inside the marina and pick up your six cards of your poker hand, and at 5:30, I believe, you meet at Greentown for your seventh card. And of course, there's all sorts of prizes. It's a fun evening, gets us out on the lake. It's our jewel. I encourage everyone to come and participate, even if it's just to watch, because it's really, really fun. Thank you.
One second, Jamie. What day is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Friday, May 29th, and Saturday, May 30th. Kind of important, sorry.
Thank you, Jamie. Next item, motion to approve the regular minutes, meeting minutes of May 4th, 2015. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Taylor. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is, we have a resolution for Bike the Amstets, which we held June 6th from 3:00 to 7:00. As you know, we shut down the Amstets and allow people to drive, ride their bicycles for three hours down the Amstets. Last year, it was really a lot of fun. I did it, and I didn't realize how tired you get. Is that age yet, Steve? Age? I see. Would you please read the resolution, Maria?
Whereas the city of Waukegan, the Waukegan Bike Project are planning to close the Amstets Highway on Saturday, June 6th, 2015, to hold the fourth annual Bike the Amstets event. And whereas this event will require the temporary closing of the Amstets Highway from Greenwood Avenue to Greenwood Street during the event. And whereas the city of Waukegan seeks to promote greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents and injuries suffered by the bicycles in our community. And whereas now there be resolved by Mayor Wayne Motley and the members of the Waukegan City Council do authorize the closure of the Amstets Highway on Saturday, June 6th, from 3:00 to 7:00, for the necessary preparation for the event in order to allow the public to ride their bikes on the Amstets Highway while free of automobile traffic from 4:00 to 6:00. Now, with further resolve, the inducible boss copy of this resolution by, signed by the mayor and the city clerk, be sent to the permitted office of the Illinois Department of Transportation in order to give their authorization for this closure dated this 18th day of May 2015.
Is there someone from the state to accept this? Oh, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to pass this tonight, and we reaffirm this at the next council meeting, because this is time-sensitive. So, a motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hello, my name's Ishmael. I'm from the Waukegan Bike Project, also known as the Lake County Bike Project. I just would like to thank you all for the opportunity for us to close it on the Bike the Amstets. I think it's a great event for the community. I hope to see you all there. It's June 6th, it's Saturday, June 6th. It's going to be from 4:00 to 6:00. We're going to have food, live band, all kinds of stuff there, so bring your friends and family, let everybody know. Thank you.
Finance Committee, Alderman Velco.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening. Item A, committee recommends waiving the bid process and authorizing the city clerk to enter into an agreement with express employment professionals for an amount not to exceed $30,000 annually, providing temporary executive secretary services for the city's clerk's office. Funding code 100-104024438, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, committee recommends approving the Community Development Block Grant, which is commonly known as CDBG, the 2015 program year allocations as presented, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Informational, Your Honor, one last thing. Twenty new business licenses were given out this past month, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Economic Development Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you. The Economic Development Committee met this evening at 6:30 PM. Our first item is the committee, the committee recommends to approve the Echo Ambassador Internship, supported by the citizens, the Waukegan Harbor Citizens Advisory Group, offering services at our beach as requested by Susie Schreiber, who is the chairman of that group, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Our second item, the committee recommends to approve five beach passes for slipholders' use this summer, slipholders at the Waukegan Port Authority, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
And then I just have a couple informational items at the committee this evening. We just wanted to recognize and thank the Waukegan Port District's Maintenance Assistant at our beaches this summer. They're going to be helping us with some of the trash removal. I'd also like to welcome Chris Logan, who's our summer intern for beach operations this summer. Chris is here in the audience. Give us a wave. We welcome him. He's going to be the steward of our beach this summer, and we're very glad to have him. And we also discussed about making the Economic Development Committee a standing meeting to provide more transparency and information about what's happening with economic development in the city of Waukegan, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman May. Public Works Committee, Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works met tonight at 6:10 PM. Item A, committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the 2015 CDBG sidewalk program. Funds for this program are available through CDBG, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
A voice vote, I'm sorry. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I have it.
Item B, committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to extend the current mosquito abatement contract with Clark Environmental for the amount not to exceed $64,000. Funds are available in line item 100-910-624425, and this is no price increase over last year, and they spray twice a year, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item C, the committee recommends an ISO move that we authorize the proper city officials to draft specification and advertise for bids for equipment lease purchase contract, mainly snow trucks. I don't believe we've had new ones, Tom, some of them sent from 1990.
91.
1991. And ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item D, committee recommends an ISO move that we authorize the proper city officials to extend the public highway overpass crossing agreement between the city of Waukegan and the Union Pacific Railroad Company.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to concur with IDOT on the award of a contract for FH Passion and SN Nielsen and Associates LLC, as well as the Union Pacific Railroad, for a total amount not to exceed $7,363,704.42. The city's out-of-pocket expense would be 1.8 million. This would be funded over this current fiscal year, as well as final out in this next fiscal year. Funds for this project are available in motor fuel tax funds from line item 228-922827619, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item F, committee recommends that we authorize the proper city officials to execute the motor fuel tax resolution, authorizing the expenditure of motor fuel tax monies for an amount not to exceed $290,000. This resolution represents additional cost over last year's estimate for the Grand Avenue Bridge, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
And that is all, Your Honor.
Thank you. There is no old business. Item 9A will be removed from the agenda. Under new business, item A, approval payroll, regular payroll dated May 15th, 2015, in the amount of regular payroll, $1,348,425.42. Final payouts in the amount of $48,138.16. Employee portion of insurance in the amount of $20,400. Comp time payout in the amount of $1,351.24. Teamsters sign-on in the amount of $11,200. Checks dated May 8th, 2015. Local 151 comp time payout in the amount of $2,173.80. Vacation cash out in the amount of $18,590. Sick payout in the amount of $392,690.52. Police tax, zero uniform allowance in the amount of $990. Map vacation and holiday buyout in the amount of $52,115.85. Teamsters vacation, holiday buyout in the amount of $27,454.51. And fire personnel cash out in the amount of $10,586.16. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated May 18th, 2015, in the amount of $2,127,243.83. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Item C, approval block parties. Motion by Alderman Seager, all, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, motion to authorize a proper city official to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Youth Conservation Corps to allow the Youth Conservation Corps members to assist in rehabbing 703 Lennox Avenue pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Villalobos. That's 702, is that what I, yeah, 702.
702.
703, Lennox.
Yours and 702.
I have them all.
702 hellos.
Okay.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance of resolution. Item A, ordinance extending the memorandum of approval for the development of the River Road Corridor of the city of Waukegan. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance amending the Waukegan North Chicago Enterprise Zone within the city of Waukegan and North Chicago, Lake County, Illinois. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance amending the December 27, 2005 Intergovernmental Agreement between the city of North Chicago and the city of Waukegan, establishing the Waukegan-North Chicago Enterprise Zone. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
I have a question. Is this the same as, um...
No.
The Enterprise Zone, North Chicago?
It's the Sheridan Road Enterprise. Noel, is that North Chi- is that 10th Street as well?
Yes.
The 10th Street as well, correct? Sheridan and North Chicago? Ross?
The Enterprise Zone goes all the way up to, I think...
But I'm saying, is item B is on here, Waukegan-North Chicago Enterprise Zone?
Amended, amended. Yeah, amended.
The Enterprise Zone is...
Okay, now we're appro- okay.
I'm sorry, it's, it's most of the south side of Waukegan, uh, and most of North Chicago, and what we're doing here is expanding it to include, per our redevelopment agreement with bridge development, including the McGaw Park property in the enterprise.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ross, to include what? McGaw Park. McGaw Park and what else, did you say?
Just McGaw Park, the 220-acre Cardinal Health Site.
Oh, we're adding that?
Yes.
To the enterprise?
And this was something that council agreed to in the redevelopment agreement with, with bridge development, but we had to, per state procedure, uh, do a report to expand the enterprise zone. That's been done, it's on file with the state, so, uh, we're just procedurally bringing this to you now, again, to include the, the bridge development property in the existing enterprise.
Oh, yeah, I'm, okay.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, ordinance authorizing the city of Waukegan to amend the interregional agreement with the city of North Chicago, which established the enterprise zone within areas of each city. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman's time, madam clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
I'll pass. No, 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 I'm sorry, no, I don't. I don't, apparent, um, maybe Alderman Moiseo, maybe Alderman May might know, um, the passing of Mr. Larson. Are you aware of that? I, I was not, and I thought, Mayor, um...
Which Larson?
From Larson Marina?
Oh, yeah, two weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, uh, didn't know, I saw his daughter, and I, I know he was very close to a lot of us, and I know Mr. Tempest, we used to talk about him all the time. Mayor, if we can maybe get a, a resolution for, or proclamation for Mr. Larson, uh, and what he has to this city, uh, I just, I was not aware of it. I don't know if the public was aware of it either. And maybe, uh, maybe Larry, you can talk about what the impact that the Larson Marina has had on our community, that that's a huge loss, history, as a part of city of Waukegan. And I know that Bishop Coburn was, was praying for, um, for individuals. I would like for us to extend our, our heart prayers to former Alderman Copeland, um, who is, um, he's seen better days, I can say that. He's still, obviously, he's still strong, but, um, his prayer, our prayers for him and his family would greatly be appreciated. Those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Pass.
Alderman Villalobos.
Um, this might take a little bit of time, so bear with me. As a new alderman, able to hit the ground running, um, was able to attend a couple of events these past two weeks. Um, I was able to connect with our firefighters, with the meet and greets. I was also able to attend Waukegan Police Department's events and meet some, uh, police officers and make, start making connections. Also, through Main Street's Mayor's Lunch, I started meeting individuals too within the city. I also was able to attend a couple of community events, the Waukegan Bulldogs 5K Run, also the Live Green Festival hosted by the Park District at Bowen Park, which was really, really entertaining and informational. And finally, the big one actually was, I was able to get an opportunity to go to Philadelphia for NRG's shareholders meeting and speak to the CEO, David Crane, face-to-face. For those who aren't aware, NRG is the company that owns the coal plant here in our lakefront. And I really look forward to the opportunity to work with NRG to get them to invest in Waukegan to a large degree. NRG is already doing a $3.5 million solar panel project, which is supposed to go on some of our schools here. And I think, uh, through collaboration and partnership with NRG, there's a lot that they can help us with in this community in terms of renewable projects. Um, so that was a really great opportunity to speak to the gentleman face-to-face. He is from Lake Forest, he's from Lake County, and I think Waukegan, you know, we really got on his radar with that meeting. Some upcoming events that, uh, to be, people be aware of. Tomorrow at 4:00 PM here in the city chambers, Illinois Department of Transportation is doing a listening session, so I invite people to attend that. I will be here. Also, there is going to be, there's four more events. An EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, public meeting regarding the North Shore South Plant, regarding the proposed cleanup plan for the tar pollution. That's going to be held Wednesday, May 20th, at Lilac Cottage in Bowen Park. Three to six is the open house, and 6:00 to 7:30 is the public meeting. Also, we have Most Blessed Trinity hosting the Summer Fiesta fundraiser on Friday, June 5th, at Most Blessed Trinity Academy's Gymnasium, from 6:00 to 6:30 PM to midnight. Uh, for tickets, call the Father Gary Graff Center, which is 847-775-0858. Also, we have coming up is the Dan Line Wine Festival on Saturday, June 6th, at Bowen Park, from 10:00 to 4:00 PM. That is a great event. I've been able to opportunity to go there multiple years. Plan on being there as well. And also, to go along with our resolution, the Bike the Am- the Fourth Annual Bike the Amstutz, Saturday, June 6th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Check-in's going to be at the corner, the Greenwood entrance of the Amstutz. I've also had the opportunity to participate in that for two years, and it is super fun. And it's a nice way to see the Amstutz in a, in a different, in a different perspective. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Alderman Newsome.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
I have one item, um, well, two items. On June 6th, which is a busy day, there also is the water safety class that's open to the public. It's free. It's, it, it starts at 8:30 AM at the yacht club, and this is the Great Lakes Surf Rescue Project. He, um, Dave Benjamin, uh, he came in, I talked to you before about, he came to the schools and did some presentations. He's also now appearing on local TV. There's another spot he has tonight. So, I encourage everyone, it's free, it's great for families, 8:30, June 6th, Waukegan Yacht Club. And then I just have one item that's been, um, gnawing at me for weeks, and it's the garbage. Of course, it's garbage, because it's my favorite thing to talk about. Um, people are putting their garbage out a day ahead, in the morning, two days ahead. I'm driving around this city and, in my ward, and I, there is an ordinance that tells you to put your garbage out at 5:00 o'clock the night before it's picked up. I understand sometimes people have a situation, they're going out of town, whatever. I see regular violators of this in my own neighborhood on a regular basis. So, people, please refresh yourself with the rules concerning garbage in the city of Waukegan. It's 5:00 the night before. That's all I have, thanks.
Alderman Valco.
Pass.
Alderman Taylor.
Um, a couple things. One, I had the honor of attending the Waukegan Police Award Dinner last Thursday. You know, our police officers are second to none, but to hear the stories was just incredible, and I thank the officers sincerely that we are very fortunate to have them. Second, um, kind of to go with Lisa's thing on garbage, I'd like people to refresh themselves on what goes into recycling and what is garbage. In my ward, I've seen a lot of people putting, um, things that should be yard waste into garbage cans, and, um, I think one of the ones that always gets me is pizza boxes do not go into recyclables. They have an oil on them, they are garbage. So, just keep that in mind when you're sorting through things, and thank you very much.
That it? Motion adjourned by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Seager. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.